Ladies and gentlemen, parents, family, thank you for your patience. Good evening. This special meeting of the Socorro ISD Board of Trustees will come to order, please. The date is Monday, May 12, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. Thank you for joining us for this special meeting, both in person and online via our YouTube stream. The full recording of the meeting will be available on YouTube and archived through the Board website, where viewers have the option of watching the meeting with closed captions translated into multiple languages. Gracias por acompañarnos en esta reunión tanto en persona como en línea a través de nuestra transmisión de YouTube. La grabación completa de la reunión estará disponible en YouTube y se archiverá a través del sitio web de la junta, donde los espectadores tienen la opción de ver la reunión con subtítulos traducidos a varios idiomas. Continuing with our agenda, please join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't have any speakers signed up for public comments, so we'll continue our agenda with Board Honors. Mr. Escobar, please.
Good evening, President Nakada, Trustee Macías, Superintendent Mr. Vasquez. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you will please step down to receive our honorees. Our first recognition honors middle school students who won the Platinum Award at the Regional Junior Visual Arts Scholastic Event. The mission of VACE is to celebrate exceptional student achievements in the visual arts by setting a standard of excellence for art students and programs to aspire to. Congratulations to our winners. From Herschel Antoine Middle School, Brianna Flores. Her teachers, Elizabeth Tro. From John Druigan School, Joy Franco. As well as Sofia Torres. Their teachers, Laura Aragon. From Enzer Middle School, Abeline Molina. Teachers, Melissa Ariano. Also from Enzer Middle School, Natalia Osorio. Teacher, Luisa Mendoza. From Motwood Middle School, Karisma Reyes. Teacher, Ever Acosta. From Eastlake Middle School, Eli Saucedo. And teacher, Rebecca Conde Candelaria. If we can have you all back to the front for a photo, please? And just a quick note, as you're gathering for that photo, that the portraits taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, are posted on our district website. The smiley face icon that you see on the bottom of the screen is on our website. That'll take you to SmugMug. Under the Board Honors section, these photos are available for free high-resolution download. All right, keep smiling, keep smiling. Congratulations once again. Our next recognition honors high school students who have been named state winners in the Visual Arts Scholastic Event. This event celebrates exceptional achievements in the visual arts and provides fine arts programs and provides fine arts programs that set a standard of excellence for high school students to aspire to. Congratulations to these talented artists. From Socorro High School, Eileen Picciardo. A teacher, Abel Saucedo. From Eldorado High School, Allison Uquida. Allison Franco. Anaya Chavez. Their teachers, Virginia Castañeda. Also from Eldorado High School, Bianca Marine. Teacher, Miguel Picos. From Pebble Hills High School, Eliana Moreno. Teacher, Bianca Sanchez. Also from Pebble Hills High School, Maritza Castro. Teacher, Arturo Villegas. Also from Pebble Hills High School, Millad Salcido. Teacher, Ivan Ortega. From Eastlake High School, Silvana Mijares García. Trinity Graves. Teacher, Lucia Semental. And representing, and here representing her student, Jackie Vargas from Motwood High School, Joseph Mitchell. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please? Congratulations once again. Our next recognition is for America's High School Boys Golf Team for winning the 2025 UIL 25A District Championship. The team earned the first golf team district title in school history, had a best player medalist, and it was the first time for the school to have multiple all-district players. Great job to this fantastic golf team. Nick Aldana. Ernesto Carillo. Trey Guevara. Gavin Perez. Miguel Velazquez. And they're led by Coach Mike Brooks. Congratulations. For our next recognition, we honor two students from America's and Eldorado High Schools who competed and placed at the 2024-2025 UIL State Track Tournament. Both student athletes had outstanding seasons, showing their talent and skill in various events. The America's athlete was a top runner in the 800, 1600, and 3200 meter races, achieved school records, and was a bronze medalist in the 1600 meter at the state meet. The Eldorado athlete also had a stellar season with exceptional finishes at the local, regional, and state levels. He won the silver medal in the 400 meter at the state meet. Congratulations to these awesome track champions. From America's High School, Diego Romero. Coaches Ken Lucero. And Victor Ruiz. And from Eldorado High School, Miguel Chapa. And Coach Jacob Sarinana. Gentlemen, if we can have you back to the front for a photo? Congratulations once again. Next, we honor the America's High School Girls Varsity Track Team for winning the 2024-2025 UIL 25A District Championship. Every student athlete on the team contributed to earning the championship, making improvements and earning notable achievements along the way. Several of the team members are multi-sport athletes, and many of them earned record-breaking times, personal bests, and medals in their individual track events. Congratulations to the America's Girls Track Team. Giselle Abascal. Isabel Bali. Itzul Cortez. Kayla Favela. Brenda Lee. And Head Coach Joshua Nun. Congratulations once again. Our next recognition is for the Eldorado Boys Varsity Track Team for winning the 2024-2025 UIL 25A District Championship. The outstanding team featured many talented student athletes making their mark in track and field with individual awards and inspiring finishes in their races. The student athletes earned various numerous, earned numerous individual district, regional, and area titles and best times that led them to this awesome championship. Congratulations to the impressive Eldorado Boys Track Team. Dario Bello. Miguel Chapa. José Cordova. Evan Coral. Andrew Estrada. Julián González. Isaac Gutierrez. Matthew Pinto. Tanner Reagan. August Rodríguez. Anthony Salazar. Maika Silva. Zachary Silva. Joshua Vega. Elijah Vázquez. Daniel Well. Coaches Kristen López. Dominic Ramírez. Angel Soto. Cedric Patterson. And Head Coach Jacob Sarinana. If we can have you all back up to the front for a photo? Congratulations once again. For our final recognitions, we honor students and career and technical student organizations for winning first, second, or third at state competitions and/or qualifying for national or international competitions. Over 100 SISD students achieved top positions at both the state and national levels. These students gained hands-on experience and enhanced their leadership and personal development skills through numerous CTSO competitions. Congratulations to these award-winning students. We will recognize them by organization, starting with BPA, or Business Professionals of America. From America's High School, Sergio Cordova. Zoe Zuniga. Christian Sandate. Gael Mena. Jael Rivera. Haliel Rivera. From Mission Early College High School, Eileen Arbinderis. Emilio Rodríguez. Jesús Martínez. Anel Perales Hudson. Elise de Santiago. Cassandra Alarcón. Jaslyn Zambrano. Valeria García Gallardo. Rosabel Navárez. If we can have our BPA students to the front for a photo? Keep smiling, keep smiling, looking straight ahead. Congratulations once again. We continue with students being recognized in the Texas Association of Future Educators, or TAFI. From Eldorado High School, Valeria García. Alisa Ríos Hernández. Elena Dominguez. And from Pebble Hills High School, Caitlin Porras. If we can have you ladies back to the front for a photo? All right, looking ahead at Mr. Largo. Congratulations once again. Next, we have our TSA, or Technology Student Association, students. From Eldorado High School, Gracie Navarro. From John Druigan School, Savannah Waters. Daniela Rosales González. Jimena Guzmán. Anthony Herrera. Eric Ortiz. Ayewa Adugemfi. Camila Arroyo. Anjela Rosales. And from Sunridge Middle School, Salvador Buñoz Solís. Kamali Olvera. And Demos Delgado. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please? Congratulations once again. We continue with recognition from students who participated in Skills USA. From America's High School, Gabriel Isaiah Salcill. Max Messina. Ivan Vidalis. From Eldorado High School, Hansel Montalvo Casas. From Motwood High School, Abril Alacón. Bernice García. Kiani Morades. Karen Fuentes. Kristel Renteria. Kristen Torres. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please? Congratulations once again. Congratulations once again. Big smiles, big smiles. Congratulations once again. We continue with students who competed and won in FFA. From Pebble Hills High School, Anna Martinez. Edgar Serino. Adam Diaz. Sydney Revés. Hazel Acosta. And Sienna Hernández. If we can have you back to the front, please, for a photo? Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize the Eldorado High School Architecture Team who won top spots in the Texas AIA High School Design Ace National Competition and CERT National Design and Construct. They won a lot of competitions. They are Gracie Navarro. Limé Malonado. Jasmine López. Cassandra Salinas. Anthony Centeno. Ariadna Castor. Elian Apodaca. If we can have you all back to the front for a photo, please? Congratulations once again. And next, with our final recognition, we recognize the Montwood High School Robotics Teams who competed at the first Tech Challenge Robotics State Competition and qualified for the FRC Robotics World Championship. Adrian Arredondo. Isaac Sepulveda. Alejandro Vázquez. Benjamin Flores. Monvit Chidi. Brandon García. Axel Alcala. Maya Estrada. Ana Buquía. Frida Álvarez. Karimé López González. Dominic Alfaro. All right, if we can have you all back to the front for a photo, please? One more, one more, one more. Horns. Congratulations once again. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you. Further business before, there be no further business before this board. We are adjourned. The time is 6:37. The date is Monday, May 12, 2025.